Okay, we got discussion, action.
Hold on, you got a couple of.
Oh.
Hoffman?
Here.
Lark?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Brooks?
Here.
Adair?
Here.
Okay, item number four, discussion, action on consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the campaign. A member of the council designed to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it be removed from the consent agenda and place poor discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of amendments to special meeting 25 September 24, approval of amendments to the regular meeting September 16, 2024, approval of claims in amount of $468,073 and $0.22 and payroll expenses of $245,655 and $0.55.
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion and a second. And we have a vote.
Parsons?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Okay, item number six is reports from staff. My information?
Is that?
None. Out of hospital authority, I don't have anything to report. I have a public library board meeting on October 14.
They had a full, have a full schedule of activities for all ages at the library right now. Apprentice is now working with the library since SPI went out of business. The Chocolate Fantasy will be November the 14th at 7:00 p.m. And other than that, it's routine.
Any questions from Ms. Swallow? Alba Tourism Tax Commission meeting on October 16.
Ah, so he's not here. So they had one, item vote on that was the Alba All School reunion came to them. They tried to do it last year in 2020. It didn't, obviously COVID. But so they're gonna try to get in this year, kind of all school reunion. They're expected to have about 6,000 people in town. And I don't remember what exactly that was they asked for, but we approved it to support that, that function.
Any questions? Alba Regional Airport Commission meeting on October 14.
Kelly's not here, so nothing real major on that, mostly just routine business. Approved a couple of change orders that are on here tonight and approved the Amendment 11s on there tonight, as well as approved the recommendation to surplus the 2016 freightliner. Not as real a little business as had been happening.
All right, any questions? Alba Parks and Rec Commission meeting on October 9.
Okay, we discussed the LWCF grant for the bathhouse in the gazebo and no action was taken on it. We approved the sanitation sewer installation to be done by ascent for $54,050 due to a miscommunication earlier on it being completed by the city. So you'll see that also today.
Any questions? Finance Committee meeting on October 21.
We had a pretty short routine meeting. We just kind of went through our fund balances. As of September 2024, our general funds at 20% of the collected, the AUA is at 31%, the AEDA is at 4%, and then our sales tax is at 26%. SADY also said that they got one of the new ICS accounts up for the scholarship money, so there's been about $300,000 moved into that. It's making 4.3% interest. And then I believe Steve and Kelly are gonna talk to the airport board about moving their checking account into the ICS as well, since they're not really writing any checks out of the account and money's just sitting there. That's all we covered.
Any questions for Garrett Finance Committee? Moving on, item number seven, inquiries by citizens. Please limit your minutes.
Hold on, you missed K and L.
Oh. No mayor here, so how about the city business manager for reports?
So I attach your, I attach your report to the agenda. I'm assuming that we got, gotta take a look at it. Still playing with a little bit. I wanna, I think the grants are good, a lot of detail. All the projects are good. I don't know if there's any additional detail you want to see on those. Waterline's pretty self-explanatory. The vehicle repair maintenance and slash maintenance and building maintenance, I'm still, I wanna tweak this. I wanna find a way to show, for example, or show it's total of three hours. We basically billed ourselves 30 bucks an hour for Ronnie's cost. The average out of town for mechanic, we went and looked, talked to all the people out here fixing cars, averaged out to $105 an hour. So just that savings alone is significant. I just wanna figure out a way to show that on here without making it too busy and too cluttered up. So I'm still playing with that one. And otherwise, I mean, no further questions. I think this.
Yeah, I think it covers everything.
So as you guys look at it, as you council members look at it, if you think there's something else you want to see on there, let me know, we can add it. And this is gonna be pretty easy to keep up now, as long as I send it out to the department head and say, here, fill your part out every week and then at the end of the month, email it back to you. Easy. One thing I did wanna show, the good news story, the valve right now. Maybe if it work. Bring it back more to you. So we'll see. There you go. This is Oka Street today.
Wonderful.
They got, right here is, that's a corner of the, of the 8th Street. So they got the entire north side of the street done on Loeks on 700 block, and they made it about three quarters of the way across to the 800 block before we ran out of material. And so they're gonna be back at it again tomorrow. So there are, there's four semi trucks, roughly 96 ton of material was put down today, so.
Is that the underlayment or is that the final?
So that's the final. We use this red dirt truck, some guys do asphalt. They said, go find the hardest red dirt you can find and just pack it in there and pack it over here in the water and pack it in the water. And then they said, you don't have to use any, any sort of underlayment or anything or any tack oil or nothing, just come right over. And it seems like it worked good, so. Anyway, I thought I'd show you those pictures, that's kind of a good news story.
Do they have any questions?
Are we doing our own oil changes now or are we still looking?
Any other questions, we'll move on to item number seven, public comments by citizens. Public comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker, must have been a, him, self or herself.
My name is Kenneth Ferris. I met y'all last month with a water issue I had. I was told by Mr. Parker the city wouldn't do anything about my issue. He then told me I could try to appeal the city's decision. Come to find out, there is no appeal process. I called the district attorney, Chris Bourne, and was told they don't do any city appeals. I also called the office of the Oklahoma Attorney General, and again, they stated they take complaints but don't do city appeals. I'm here today to see if we can change that. I was only given two minutes to explain my situation, and only one man made the decision to not do anything. I truly believe the people of this community. Sorry about that, that lost. Should have an opportunity to appeal one man's ruling. I followed the chain of command, and I also didn't go to Facebook and trash our leaders. I hope you can appreciate that. I do believe, however, there should be an appeal process. There are seven city council members here, and it's important to hear what they all have to say. So I ask that you think and discuss about having an ordinance that deals with city appeals.
Nobody else? Okay, we'll move on to item number eight. Public hearing to determine whether the following addresses should be declared dilapidated, constitute detriment or a hazard and therefore nuisance as defined by the city ordinance, and abated a, A, 116 Chalk Town Street, 201 Ninth Street, 203 Ninth Street, 902 Santa Fe, 903 Santa Fe, 905 Santa Fe, and 917 Santa Fe Street.
If there are any questions, the code enforcement officer, if you have any questions.
I also printed off some photos of each one of those properties if you guys wanted to see them. I wasn't expecting there to be a meeting about it yet, so. But yeah. So previously on these properties, most of them are from Profit Trust, basically, and took forever to find someone. And when we went to go abate these yards, Brad Profit actually showed up and he took care of them, but some of these houses are, are becoming quite detriment to, to the area, and some of them are fire hazards, some of them have some holes in the roof and trees are growing up around them, and it's just gonna be harmful for neighbors. The 917 Santa Fe is owned by Vinnie Benson Estate, and we're having a hard time locating anybody with that one also, so.
So what does an ordinance say? I mean.
Our ordinance, we follow the state statute in our, on Title 11, 22112. That's how most of our nuisances start, and then our ordinances follow suit with all of the state statutes and, and nuisance areas.
So you haven't contacted Keller Vincent's sister, who's?
I am unable to find a number for her.
I might be able to give that.
You might go help me with that, okay? Yeah, 'cause that house is, is in pretty rough shape. We actually abated that yard and door's unlocked and it's got some pretty bad smells coming from it.
Are people living in any of these?
Nope, these are all vacant homes.
Most of them are uninhabitable?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And most of them, if they were gonna remodel them at all, they're gonna have to bring all the codes up to date on all of them and.
This could have been before you were, it probably wasn't before you were here, but I kind of remember some of these properties already being condemned once. Do you know if there's anything on record of that?
I, I haven't seen any of it, so. I'm saying that they haven't been, but I just haven't seen records of them yet, so.
Last time that I could find, we basically, we did this process was July of 2020. That's what I have to go back to to find the correct order for this, so.
Yeah, we did the 827 Maple not too long ago, we declared that one, but, so.
So what happens now? Does the city hire or ask about it?
So there's, there's two processes now, and actually I've been, me and Drake Lewis have been in conversation with Steve Ford about how the city can possibly handle these dilapidations and how we can take care of them without hurting the bank on it, really. Otherwise, we gotta go out to a bid process, and it's about 10 grand per house right now. So, and frankly, I ain't got the funds in, in my dilapidated budget to take care of all of it.
I think we budgeted like right off of 15,000.
Yeah, 15,000's all we got. And that 15,000 also takes care of many abatements that we take on yards, trash and anything like that, too.
Is, can we take care of them with city equipment? Is that something?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, Drake, yeah, Drake Lewis thinks that he can, especially now that we're possibly getting more crew members. He thinks that we can probably do this stuff like in the winter time.
Okay.
And so mainly our, our biggest fee is just gonna be the haul off, so. And we got some pricing on that, so we're still working on a lot of that.
But this is the first step we did up here, yeah?
Yeah, this is the first step, and then, then we got 30 days to notify the owner of these properties to see if they can do something with it. But other than that, yeah, after 30 days.
And I assume this is just the first round that's coming, there's a lot more?
There will be, yeah.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is because I don't, if I get a phone call from the person who owns one of these houses that says, hey, there's 10 houses that are just as bad, why are you coming after me type deal?
So.
It's not we're coming after you, it's you're the first one in the process as we get the whole time.
And the way that works, too, is, is complaint basis. I, I don't just pinpoint one specific area or anything like that. If I get a complaint that crosses my desk, that's how I tackle all these.
Okay.
So there's no bias on any of it, but it's just, when I get a complaint for a dilapidated structure or a fire hazard, that's how I attack these.
So all these folks, other than the one, have been?
Brad Profit is aware of these. I, I tried to call him today to let him know that there was gonna be a meeting about it, but I couldn't get no answer, and he didn't call me back, so. But the 917 Santa Fe is the only one that I just, I don't, I don't have a number for.
So if you don't have an owner record or say it's in an estate, can we still proceed?
Yes, yes, yeah, you got 30 days. I mean, we, what we do is we post it on the property, a letter stating, you know, it's been declared dilapidated or it is dilapidated structure. And then after that, it has to run in the paper, and then, which has already done that, so.
So even if something isn't probate or something like that, we can still?
I mean, I'll talk to, yeah, yeah, I'll talk to the trigger office just to make sure whatever kind of special assessments are on these, and if there is, then maybe I can get a number from somebody and we can go that route, too.
Okay.
Typically, no, I, if I can't find anyone to contact that's on the property, then we run it in the paper 10 days before meeting, and then we issue out whatever we feel like we need to do.
Is there a way besides placing a lien on the property and waiting for it to sell for us to recover the funds that we have invested?
There, there is a way. I'm not 100% sure. I've tried to talk to some people from Pawhuska, they have a way to where they, they pretty much take ownership of the property, the city does. So how they do that legally, I'm not real sure, so.
We can look into it.
Yeah. I, I can talk with Drew about that, so. I don't know if it's a eminent domain type thing or, or what.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah, it's what it sounds like to me, so I, I don't know how that process works, so. So if these all do get declared dilapidated, after the day, I'll go around and I'll throw a, a letter stating that it was declared dilapidated in the council, and they'll have 30 days, and we'll probably run that in the paper as well, just to let everyone know.
How many complaints have you had on the addresses?
Uh, on these five right here, yeah.
Does it come from the same person or come from multiple people?
Usually the same person, but every once in a while, it's.
I've had people contact me directly, complain about a couple of these addresses.
Yeah, I mean, typically, all the complaints usually come from someone around in the area, but on this, I've actually had probably two or three different, probably, so.
And this is not, we're not approving necessarily tearing the houses down immediately, we're just saying that we're approving the next step.
Yeah.
For you to tell them, hey, if something doesn't happen within 30 days.
Right.
We can.
Right.
Get rid of this next.
This is just, city council is going, if you guys wish to declare these dilapidated, and then after that, we'll post our letters and stuff for 30 days, and if no response, then we can, we have a decision to do whatever.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
We're gonna move on to the next. We want that item nine. Item nine is the action item.
Okay, item nine, discussion action on declaration of the dilapidation of the following addresses authorized staff to take approach, an action to abate the new address at 116 Chalk Town, 201 Ninth Street, 203 Ninth Street, 902 Santa Fe, 903 Santa Fe, 905 Santa Fe, and 917 Santa Fe. Got any questions?
Well, I'd make a motion to declare the following addresses as dilapidated nuisances and authorize staff to take appropriate action to abate the nuisances at 116 Chalk Town Street, 201 Ninth Street, 203 Ninth Street, 902 Santa Fe Street, 903 Santa Fe Street, 905 Santa Fe Street, and 917 Santa, Santa Fe Street.
I second.
I, I have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Call vote, please.
Parsons?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Brooks?
No.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Lark?
Yes.
Okay, item number 10, discussion action to approve, approve the city of Alba ordinance 2024-003, and ordinance amending the retirement system to buying benefit plan of the city of Alba, Oklahoma, by providing a special retirement option for certain eligible employees based on age and years of credited service, such as employees providing for severability and declaring an emergency. Can you hear us, Chris?
Yes, sir, and?
Okay. Uh, they just read the, the motion or the agenda item. So I've got Chris on here from, from, from OKAMRF. So if there's any questions about this ordinance, so essentially what this does, incorrect from wrong here, Chris, this is basically give us ability to, uh, three employees who, who meet the criteria, uh, the ability to retire early without affecting their retirement benefits. Is that right, Chris?
So, so, yeah, let's, and I'm gonna carry that a little bit farther. There was one of, we actually divided these people into two groups. One group, they're already at normal retirement age, so we were trying to provide them a little additional incentive so that they might go ahead and consider retiring. And then the other group were people who were not quite retired, normal retirement age yet. It was to provide them a benefit so that they could retire now and have no reduction in the value of their benefit because they were leaving early.
But this isn't mandatory. This is something we can offer them?
It is not mandatory. Yeah, it is, it is not mandatory. It is an offer to them for them to consider. And so the ordinance, basically, it would give them the ability that come November 1st, the window would open. They would have until the end of December to consider their options of whether they want to retire or not retire. And then if they choose to not retire, then they would sign a form saying, I have declined the window, and we would put that in their record. Or if they choose to retire, then they must be off the payroll by February 1st. But either way, for the three affected employees, they would have to either positively sign a form saying that they want to retire or not retire.
Can we get some context, like why?
Well, so.
I agree.
So, well, the very kind of asked me to look into it. Number one, and number two, the, the folks who are looking at, asking to retire early are at a higher level of our, as far as our pay scale. They're, they're maxed out the pay scale, so we can save some money if they retire early. Then we basically hire behind them a, a younger person that's not all the way to the right side of the pay scale. Essentially.
So we're talking about three people, but if we put this ordinance in, does this mean that until it's changed, that we have to offer early retirement to everybody?
No.
Okay.
So is this? Is there any dates on it?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, and it's very specific. Whenever we ran the study, we said that we wanna look at people who are currently over age 65 with the required years of vesting service for people who were 62 with greater than 25 years of service. So it was very specific to that group as of when we ran the study. But in the future, you would not be obligated to offer this window to any other people.
These people express a desire wanting to retire early or?
No, that's what we're doing, this is to offer to them, to see if they, if they want to, if they do, great, if they don't, yeah. They don't save money.
It's kind of a bad question, are these, are these good employees?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But actually, I know we're losing two of them regardless, within the next six months. This is, it's an opportunity to get them off the payroll six months early.
Okay.
Because they're both gonna retire when they're 65.
And Mr. Ford, what will happen is if the council goes ahead and chooses to pass this ordinance, I would schedule a time to come up in early to mid-November so that I can counsel these specific people as to what their options are so that they can seriously consider that. But I would come to Alba so that they know this is how it affects me, and then go through the timeline of this is how long the window is open, and you must make a decision to either accept or deny, not later than this day, and you've got to sign a written form for the city.
Does this affect what we pay into the retirement plan at all?
Say that again, Chris.
He asked if this affects what we pay into the retirement plan.
Yeah, so there is a small cost. Go to, in, in the study that you have, if you look at it, go to page.
I don't have the, I don't have the study, Chris.
Oh, okay, okay. So, uh, the, the cost that you would pay into it, assuming that everybody who took the, who was offered the window took it, the cost would go up by 0.41%, okay? So it's a pretty nominal cost, uh, but yet you would be saving $195,000 in the payroll.
Is that a permanent increase?
So the payroll savings would offset the cost increase pretty dramatically.
Yeah.
Do we, I mean, do we kind of have replacements lined up if we, if they go early? Are these guys able to do their job? Quality work, are they still able to do it at a quality that we expect?
Don't have the replacements, you have the.
The guys that were.
Yeah.
And we're not forcing people to retire early, this is just, this is just out of, and we're.
What it does also is it extends this plan. So let's say there were 25 years for longevity when they retire at 65. This offer gives them two more years of longevity. And so if they took their retirement, they're not taking any hit of their retirement pay as, as like you rule, if you're retired at 64 and a half, you don't get all your pay that you're at 65. This will give them all their pay that this is at 65.
That's correct. That is correct.
Is this a common thing you see in other municipalities?
Yeah, it is. So what will happen is some of the municipalities, they'll have, um, long service workforces, and that long service workforce, just like y'all, they'll max out the pay scale by virtue of longevity and things like that, and yet they may still have, um, four or five or even 10 years before their potential to retire. So a city will come in periodically and say, we wanna do one of these windows and, and offer employees the ability to go out early. Alba, uh, they have done it, I'm aware of, four times. But there, it, it's not, it's not just Alba's, there are other cities that have done this. But there, it's not, it's not just Alba. There are other cities that have done this.
Any other questions, Chris?
Yes, sir.
No, I'm asking everybody to share the questions for you.
Do you think this sets a precedent for everyone?
That's my worry, not be able to retire early. I mean, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I guess, but it sets an expectation that everyone gets to retire a year or two earlier than, or six months or whatever earlier.
Yeah, and that's just with these guys. They're all within a year.
What to do for Medicare?
I believe they, don't they stay on our insurance, Chris?
So, that would be something that you would need to work out with your insurance, but they would have the ability, the way that the law is designed in Oklahoma, they do have the ability that they can buy into your health insurance.
Okay. That's a question that I had too. And the way that I understood it when we talked with Chris, that's really a decision that kind of goes back to them. They've got the 60-day window to evaluate if this affects them positively and what their plan would be in those, for those type of things.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
See, the insurance is going to affect those folks that leave early that are not 65. Right. 65, you've got to get on Medicare and use the city as supplemental somehow, right?
And remember, for y'all, you have your pension system, but you also have a defined contribution plan, and so these employees all participate in the defined contribution plan. So they have a supplemental pot of money that they can go to to help them cover the cost of health insurance at the interim.
And that would all be explained to them when they come, when you come up with it.
Yes, sir, that's correct. I would work with them on that.
And Chris, it costs us nothing to open this window and make the offer. That's correct?
Yeah, so the actuary, he did charge you to run this study. He charged you, I think it was $650 or $675, but outside of that, it cost nothing else.
And that actually doesn't come from, it comes from our pot of money that's sitting at OKMRF.
Right.
So we didn't give a, give a, give a city for that.
That's correct.
Well, if Dr. Peggy let me retire earlier, I'd take it, so. All motion to approve City of Alba Ordinance 2024-003 and ordinance amending the retirement system benefit, defined benefit plan of the City of Alba, Oklahoma by providing a special retirement option for certain eligible employees based on the age and years of credited service of such employees providing for severability and declaring an emergency.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Do I have any other discussion?
I'm sure it is, but is the city's insurance that they take in is considered credible coverage from that by Medicare?
Yes.
And discussion. Call vote please.
Lauren?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Adair?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hey, Chris, I appreciate it, buddy.
No problem. Heather, I'll give you a call later in the week, and I'll schedule them for early November.
Sound good.
Y'all take care, and I'll be right back.
You too, Chris. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Okay, moving on to number 11, presentation from Enterprise Fleet Services.
Steven, last week, Oklahoma weather threw me a curveball this week, so I went camping. I went from 60, 70 at night to 20, 29, 30, so excuse my voice and yelling at my kids on a camping trip, so. But I talked to Chris, or sorry, Steven, a little bit last week. Really, my second meeting, that I come to a council meeting, I would see if there's any questions, if any thoughts had come up since our presentation a month ago, and see if there was any questions to our program. Again, we're evaluating a partnership with Enterprise, piggybacking off the Sourcewell contract that was awarded to Enterprise in order to start working with the City of Alba supplying vehicles. At this point, that is our real purpose of this. It's the vehicles funding. Maintenance would stay the same. Fuel would stay the same, and then vehicle resale would be our major component where we'd probably see the largest impact on the program, as well as cycling vehicles from a 15-year cycle down to about a five-year cycle at a, say, a lot for probably a little bit less.
And I did talk to Woodland City Manager. They started about two years ago or a year ago?
About three years. Yeah, a little over two.
So, Sean's just taking it. He loves it. Of course, he just likes having newer, better vehicles for those people who drive, look safer and get more fuel efficient, you know? So, anyway, we're just on board. They're right in the middle and enjoying it.
How many vehicles are we looking at?
So the initial? The initial starting point, and that's the beauty of our contract. It's a master lease agreement, so there's no commitment to do any certain number of vehicles. So really, our first year, if we're looking at a five-year rotation, you've got 30 vehicles, so we're looking at six. I'm, I'm always willing to get it more glass-half-empty side, is that we've had troubles with manufacturers, early cutoffs, and so I look out 12 to 18 months, so we want to just be looking this first, you know, what have we got left in this fiscal year, 70 months? I'd be looking into next year because I'd want to start aligning the budget with when vehicles are coming in so that you guys can better budget what your fiscal year looks like. So, yeah, that's, that's kind of the plan. Six of 10 is what I wrote down this morning looking at it. Since our last meeting, council approval with Cities Collinsville, City of Centriston in Arkansas, and I go to Guyman next, next week, or two and a half weeks from now to get final approval there.
So, is it, is it like a yearly fee for the vehicle management plus buying the vehicles from you? Kind of go over what your fee structure is, if you don't mind.
Yeah, so with the Sourcewell contract, you guys have our, pretty much our base management fee, which be determinable on the vehicle's cost. So if we did a $40,000 vehicle at point one oh management fee, you're paying us a $40 management fee. You get the vehicles that invoice costless all incentives, which is equal to or better than state bid pricing, especially when you get into options, because options on state bid is always at MSRP. We're always at invoice. We'd factor order what we could, and then you would have no markups on those vehicles. And if we got something out of vehicle inventory, of dealer inventory that's available, you would just pay that cost that we were able to acquire that vehicle for. As far as funding goes, it's three-year T bills plus 300 basis points based on the Sourcewell contract. Everyone else that we do business with is 400 plus basis points.
So, it's, this is all lease purchase? Is that correct?
I don't think that word's okay to say. It's a lease, open ended equity lease, so at the end of this lease, there is opportunity for, so I set it up on a five-year term. It's reviewed annually to meet state statutes, and then at the end of that term, there's an option to extend it, sell it, and if for, like a dump truck, if we did that, we would, we would work through that process of passing over that vehicle title. So, it's just dependent. We're still family owned, and we can make those decisions as they come, but we don't lean towards a purchase option at the end because it doesn't make financial sense.
So we just rent, we're leasing the vehicles from you guys. Now, is there any equity whenever that lease ends that we, how does that work?
Yeah, so if we took a $40,000 vehicle and we wrote it down to a $10,000 balance, that's what makes it a lease. So it's still paying for $40,000 over five years. You're going to pay for 30. At the end, when I sell that vehicle, let's just say the book value says it's going to be worth 18, but I sell it for 20, you get anything above 10 to 20. So that's where this starts becoming more and more effective. That 10, eight to $10,000 would come back in the form of equity to the city.
So we're going to apply for the next lease?
Yeah.
Replacing that one? If I sit there, just makes that lease that much cheaper.
And now, and this is all in a way of, for budgetary restraints, for some reason, we couldn't afford the vehicle, then how, what is the fee there? I mean, how does that work?
So the, the contract actually does have a non-appropriation clause. So let's say year three, we're no longer, that division is gone, or that department downsized it. You have a non-appropriation, so what we would do is look at that vehicle. Specifically, we'd be putting hands on it and figuring out, does it make sense to move it to another department? Does it make sense to sell that vehicle off from an equity standpoint? We give you all the options, because that's the beauty of our partnership. We want to just be getting you six vehicles and coming back in five years to pick them up to sell them for you. We would be working this on an annual basis. There's multiple vehicles in y'all's fleet list that would make sense to replace on an annual basis, or maybe every 18 months or 24 months based on getting more money back at the back end to add towards the equity that's built into the fleet.
And you're going to say, these pickups, I mean, you'll tell us possibly we need to sell them and show us the numbers?
We give a recommendation, and you guys go, yep, that looks great, or, ah, we're going to run it a little longer. Okay, I guess our recommendation, but that's, that's fine.
This might be a silly question, but now run that same speech where we end up in a negative equity situation.
So let's say we ran it five years, and that vehicle was, let's just say it's damaged. That's the only way that I've ever seen a vehicle become less than what we set it to because that remaining balance at the end is set very, very conservatively, even with cities. The reason that it's so conservative is because you guys get more money off that vehicle at the very beginning, so eight to $10,000 or six to 10, depending on which manufacturer. So you're already starting at a break even from day one. So if, let's just say it gets to the end and it's damaged beyond, and y'all didn't want to file an insurance claim, wouldn't you? We sell it for less than what it's worth, you would have a remaining balance due with us. And our recommendation on that vehicle is, let's just run it out till we paid it off, and then we can make a decision whether to keep that in the fleet or get rid of it.
But you guys see in most instances, the discount upfront eats any potential for negative equity, or most times in the back.
And that, that and our conservative nature on how we depreciate vehicles. We just don't want to put people in bad positions because then there's no equity, and then there's no beneficial role of equity towards the next vehicle, which would lower your costs year over year, or term over term.
I know we've got some trucks that really need to go, but we've also got a fleet of police pickups that are brand new. How do you deal with them? Do you take them over?
So our?
Or do we run them out?
Yeah. The fleet as is stays the same. We've targeted the oldest ones, the 98 S10 pickup, those types of vehicles. We've targeted ones that need to be replaced, and needed to be replaced. And I think it was mentioned earlier, why don't we just go out and buy it? That's kind of where we're at today, is we're buying vehicles as the budget comes available. So if we have a truck we need to replace, or two trucks we need to replace, that's typically what y'all guys are doing. And so that puts you on that 15-year cycle, which would equate to you guys paying more in maintenance, more in fuel, and diminished resale at the end. So we would not target anything that's brand new. We would work our way through the first two years, three years, four years, five years, and then by the end of five years, Steven and I talked about it, you would be replacing some of your first vehicles from Enterprise as well as getting the remainder of the fleet out. Worst case scenario, three years into this partnership, and it's not been a beneficial partnership, we can terminate that partnership just with what we've got in there, and y'all can extend them out or pay them out and do it that way.
And what vehicles do you not work with? I know you were talking about fire trucks, ambulances. Is that really the two that you guys don't do much with?
Fire engines and ambulances are the main two that we haven't, haven't ventured into at this point, and it's just, we're not experts on that. I'm actually working a quote, I don't even really want to say this. It's the first one I've ever done, but for a trash truck, which is crazy for me to think that we're even venturing into that world, but we have cities that are asking us to do it.
But they do do brush rigs.
Okay.
Yeah. So if I had the F-450 brush rig, we can put that in rotations at the county, so we can't really do it. But if we, we could put the brush rig, but I can date fire engines?
Yeah, we've actually created things with fire chiefs on how to replace those brush rigs on a more effective cycle by using skids and stuff like that to put on the back of those trucks rather than something that's fully mounted to it and requires that truck to be there for it. So we've been able to come up with some pretty good ideas for them.
And you guys don't do anything with that?
I just got an email last week on non-lease assets, our non-vehicle assets, and there is things that are happening like photos and John Deere equipment. Typically, the way we look at it, golf carts. Anything with a VIN, we can typically do with the exception of those liability ones. But it really is just, we run it through them and say, hey, is this something we're comfortable with doing? And it's usually based on a credit decision. Does it make financial sense to do this? How, some of these vehicles are $100,000 truck, but it's $400,000 in aftermarket when we're talking about crazy big equipment and stuff like that. So that's where some of it comes in, is just a credit decision. Does it make sense financially for both sides?
Do you have anybody that does like a yearly or month, some sort of inspection on these vehicles, since we don't technically own none of their cars? Do you guys do any sort of?
So although we're the title owner, you guys are the registered owner of the vehicle. They would have state plates, our city plates. They would, everything would act the same except we'd make better, not better, recommendations on a better cycle based on what data's out there. How much are we spending on maintenance, fuel, disposal? Steven's putting together a pretty good list that tells us, hey, that data that he was showing you earlier will only make our recommendations more effective, as he shares that with us when we're putting together our recommendations.
Is that something you guys could offer if we wanted to do like a yearly inspection of all the vehicles, make sure they're being maintained properly, make sure they're safe? Is that some, a service that you guys have, something that could do something like that?
You would be a summer client strategy manager that would be out here three to four times a year.
So they would be looking at vehicles, making sure they're maintained? I just, you know?
So since y'all guys are doing your maintenance internally, we would have quarterly checks on that, just to say, hey?
Perfect.
Let's, let's just add the numbers in here and make sure that all vehicles are getting maintained properly, because the last thing you want to do is loan it and get on it.
Absolutely.
I have a question. Adam? How many brush rigs do we have?
Two.
So if those, if those were on a rotation, would that be pretty beneficial to the fire department?
Yeah, I mean, if they're counting on, actually, our big 5,000 gallon tanker, that's what I was thinking, because this is actually City of.
Does it seem dual axle or dual axle?
Uh, it's, I think it's a, I think it's a freight. But yeah, it's a, it's a separate trailer, so I mean, it's 5,000 gallons. That's what I was thinking, though, when you said that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, brush rigs will always be counting on. That'll, I mean, maybe we can get adventurous and do one ourselves, but you're just counting to hold on some of that stuff.
A lot of the fire, fire on ones that we've done are the ones with like the camper, the F-250 with a camper, kind of our first responder, and then cheese vehicles, stuff like that are really popular with us, but we've done some of the other ones.
Now, what interest rate are you looking at as built in on these payments?
It is at the three-year T bills. That's what I was mentioning a little bit earlier. So we have our management fee, interest factor, which is three-year T bills and 300 basis points. I'll have to double check that it's not 200. So it equals up to, I haven't seen the T bill today, but interest is going down, so I would say we're in the six, seven range on that interest, and then our management fee to dispose of vehicles at flat 400, which again is heavily discounted from what we charge other people.
Do you have like a profile from Sourcewell that has all these fees in it that we could have a copy of?
Yeah, I think I've shared the link of the Sourcewell contract.
Okay.
Like a projection of what this will save the city annually once throughout the dawn?
So we, we looked at it from industry averages. I think Steven could attest that some of the data that we've had from five, six, seven years back, we probably don't have all the pieces to that puzzle. So based on the age and mileage of the fleet y'all currently have, we're anticipating a wash on the program, but it's reducing from 15 to five years. It's the only thing we can really go by at this point. The good news is, is we get six vehicles in here, maintenance will be freed of. They'll be doing oil changes and tire rotations for the first five years on this vehicle. There's not going to be a lot of maintenance on it, so that would definitely free up time for other things for that department, so that's a soft dollar savings that we can't see. Newer vehicles are more fuel-efficient vehicles. I'm driving a 2024 GMC work truck for myself, for my company, and my Chevy four years ago was getting 18. This one's getting 22, and they have the same V8. So it's just more efficient vehicles coming out. I'm not saying that city vehicles driving around the city are going to get that much better fuel company, but the degradation that we see in older vehicles could actually add some savings there as well.
I'll go with his. Did you ask what, how much may they've saved?
They, they haven't really, they haven't really figured it out yet.
Okay.
Like I said, they're, they're still pretty young in the whole program, so I asked him that question. He couldn't tell me the answer.
So a lot of our cities would be three, they're probably one of our? So a lot of our cities would be three, they're probably one of our mid. Um, a lot of them haven't even hit their first cycle yet to sell them. We sold vehicles for cities, and it's because of our short cycle that we recommended. Um, but people like Oklahoma State, who's been clients for ten years, those are the ones that probably could see it out year over year. And I remember in their second year, they went with Nissan, or, sorry, Chevy Malus their first year, getting twenty-six, twenty-seven miles per gallon, and then we rotated in Nissan Altima's, because their concern was they have a GM certified shop on campus, um, part of their career tech. And so their concern was, well, we want GM products, but they knew they could do oil changes on a Nissan. That Nissan alone added six miles per gallon to their fleet of pool vehicles that they sent out to other campuses. And so instantly, and the resale's better on the Nissan, so it was just an instant savings that we were able to, hey, this is what we did. Um, big picture, like if we were handling maintenance and stuff like that, we could show you, hey, this is what we negotiated those repairs down. Um, but we can still give those recommendations if something comes up with your current owned fleet.
And it's a second full factor warranty.
Yeah, so, I mean, most of these vehicles, within that first five years, thirty, forty, fifty thousand miles on them, they won't even need a second set of tires. Um, and the resale value is drastically increased on a forty-year-old or five-year-old vehicle with thirty, forty thousand miles.
So when we currently per, do a open-ended equity lease, we are buying those vehicles based on state contract pricing, is that? And then we are financing them through, um, or the title holder of the vehicle, um, with the open-ended equity lease is normally a local bank, is that correct?
It depends, like the, uh, the F-150s, the police, I think it was the RBC Bank.
Okay.
Uh, I think the branch we talked to was in the buy-in.
Okay.
Uh, but yeah, I feel like the bigger things, like the fire engine, the ambulances, we went local banks, because they've got all the banks to come together. Uh, and Alabama State is a big, 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 to buy that big purchase.
Yeah.
But for, for lease purchase for our F-150s, which is all the things we've done, it's something, uh, we did it with our CBI bank at the buy-in.
All right.
So.
Now, as far as your rate goes, I, I know it's always changing, but I mean, competitive, I mean, how competitive are you guys? Is there any matching, like if we fix something, how to, or is that, are we going to pay a little higher rate to get your service? How does that work?
Yeah, it, it, based on the Sourcewell pricing, that's the, the most cost-effective way. And it, all of ours is based off the three-year T-bills and how many basis points we want to add to it. I know, like I said, a traditional client may have four hundred fifty or five hundred basis points. Y'all guys are hitting three hundred with the Sourcewell contract. If I had to say it's competitive, I haven't seen any government loans given out recently. Um, this would probably be, Godman, I think had one, and they were the four or fives, I think. So there is a percentage that were a little bit higher, and it's just because of the markets that we're trading in. Um, but it's all upfront, it's the fees that you see, and there's not anything that's kind of hidden into it. Um, if I was to say with just a bank, we're not, we're, we're everything that comes with the vehicles. Um, our relationships have been able to help cities that were meeting desperately for vehicles over the last four or five years, actually get vehicles, um, the resale part, gaining on that resale side. So I, I can't speak to it just from a banking standpoint, um, because that's just a small portion of what we do.
So we get a vehicle paid off completely, and we want to run it for a while. What is the fee thereafter it's paid off? If we want to like remove it from the program or something like that?
There's no early termination and no termination penalties. Um, so typically, what would happen, the best route is for us to keep it on our management. And that's where the, the flat management fee would come in. It wouldn't be the point one oh, it would go down to a flat management fee, and I'd have to revisit the Sourcewell contract to see where that's at today.
Okay.
Uh, because I know that was rebid about a year ago. So you would go to a flat management fee, or if we came together and said, hey, we're going to keep this one as a spare for the next four years? This is the only one, we want to kind of look at this play, can we do it? That's where Enterprise does the right thing with our clients. It would be something we'd probably release a title. That would be on, I'd say, occurrence is where it makes the most sense. Um, if it gets to a point where you're asking for all of that, then you're no longer looking at fleet management the same way we are, and it may not make sense to continue the partnership on both sides.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for your time, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, item number twelve. Discussion action to authorize and direct the city business manager to enter into negotiation to Enterprise Fleet Services, and present to the city council a proposed contract. Any discussion?
I'd make the motion to direct the city business manager to enter into negotiations with Enterprise Fleet Services, and present to the city council a proposed contract.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call vote please.
Parsons.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Okay, item number thirteen, discussion action to approve Park Hill contract amendment number eleven, for services related to the surveying and geotechnical studies for potential future hanger project in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
So the, the ODAA, uh, I have a, they, they come up with quite a bit of money. And so the, the director, uh, Mr. Arty's down here a couple times, uh, and he's got on his, on his radar about four different projects. He wants us to go out here to airport. Uh, the biggest one would be the, the turmoil upgrade, uh, that's kind of the last one. Uh, and the ODAA has some, some pretty significant money, uh, which I believe is a, a ninety, ten mass, or maybe you're wrong, uh, for this hanger. And so, uh, or I, I may have it wrong, Toby can tell you much better. Maybe forty percent for ODAA, fifty-five percent from the FAA, and five percent from us. Um, but regardless, we're going to get this hanger for a little or nothing. But this is the first step to it. We got to go out here and do the surveys and the geotech, and make sure that soil, suitable, all that kind of stuff. Uh, and that's all this is, is allowing us to get Park Hill to come do that stuff for us.
And this is the recommendation of the airport board?
Yes, yeah, they recommended this, uh, on the fourteenth, whatever that meeting was. Yeah, fourteenth.
Motion to approve Williams electric change order.
Park Hill.
Make a motion to approve Park Hill contract amendment number eleven, for services related to the surveying and geotechnical studies for a potential future hanger project in the amount of fifteen thousand seven hundred dollars.
All circuited.
I have a motion and a second, uh, any other discussion? Call and vote please.
I didn't catch you seconded.
Lark.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, item number fourteen, discussion action to approve Williams electric change order number one, reducing the rehabilitate runway lights contract by twenty-three thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars.
Basically, we have too many parts, so I was going to basically give the parts back, and some money comes off the contract, we don't have to pay it. This is also approved by the, uh, airport board on the fourteen.
I'll motion to approve Williams electric change order number one, reducing the, uh, rehabilitate, yeah, the rehabilitate runway lights contract by twenty-three thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call the vote please.
Lark.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Could you second that, man?
I did.
I'm sorry, I can't tell you on voice, sorry. So I'll change that, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, item number fifteen, discussion action to approve contact change order number two, increasing the contract price for the apron expansion phase one by thirteen thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
So this, and if you want to see it, I can show it to you. This thing somehow got lost in the paperwork shuffle with the FAA. They've already gotten the money, this, this company has, but this, for some reason, this change order never got signed, but it's dated January of twenty twenty-two. Uh, so well before my time here, but the FAA would like for us to, to approve this, so we can, paperwork-wise, close out this contract with the FAA, and they're closing up the screen with the FAA.
I would move to approve the contact change order number two, increasing the contract price for the apron expansion phase one by thirteen thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call the vote please.
Edir.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Okay, I'm moving on to item number sixteen, discussion action to recommend declaring a two thousand sixteen Freightliner M-2106, VIN three eight eight LHCY-CY-six G D G U nine seven one one, a surplus to be sold for not less than sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
So this one, uh, we're trying to find a fuel truck through the, for the, uh, Jet eight tank, which appeared to have a gas tank. Uh, the Nissan, or the easy usually we bought wasn't going to work, or we're going to get, wasn't going to work, so we found this thing. Bought it, got it up here, realized that when you put the tank on, you couldn't get it inside a building. Uh, so we never could put the tank on, it hadn't even been used. We're going to try to move it around within the city, and I thought it was used for a well-pulling truck down wellfield. Problem is too big to get it around the wellfield too. So we took it to the, to the, or the airport board, they, uh, voted to recommend that we, uh, surplus it, and charge our money back and buy something that'll work.
Do you know, is there enough of a sale that you're going to do on it yet?
So I'm working with an online auction company.
Okay.
That allows us to set reserves.
Okay, I was going to say, I know probably one.
No, probably one, but I found another one, uh, that's a government surplus site, uh, that allows us to set a reserve. So that's, that's preferred, definitely. How much did we pay for it? That sixty-eight thousand.
Well, I'd make a motion to approve a two thousand sixteen Freightliner M-2106 surplus, and afford not to be sold for less than sixty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars.
Second. I have a mo, I got one question. Could this truck be used as, because we're going to keep some of the roll-offs, right? Will it be shut down enough to?
So we're going to keep one of the roll-off trucks too. So, but this one doesn't have a TPO.
Oh, okay, got you.
So.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call the vote please.
Parsons.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Okay, item number seventeen, discussion action to approve recommended road paving project bid from NJL paving in the amount of ninety-eight thousand dollars.
So before somebody asks, because it'll come up, um, this is, first of all, this is part of MR DAF money, that we got the hundred thousand dollars to repair roads and prevent damage by oilfield traffic. Um, that's what this grant is going to go towards for this, but luckily we got hundred thousand dollars for that. As you can see on here, we, Myers, we're not talking a bunch of companies. Um, and NJL came in at ninety-eight, ninety-eight thousand. Uh, they have gone and talked to a bunch of people, had, had these folks work for them, they said they did great work. The beat about this is, is we can do this without going to sealed bids, because we changed our ordinance to match state statute on construction projects, and it don't require us to go to sealed bids until it's over a hundred thousand dollars.
Now, is this something that the grant requires that we can't do in-house?
Yes, we can't do this in-house, we have a match, but we can't do, we can't perform this ourselves.
We can't, okay.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve recommended road paving project bid from NJL paving in the amount of ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Second. I have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Call vote please.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Okay, item number eighteen, discussion action to approve the City of Alva Resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash zero one nine, a resolution of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, of support for the appointment of Stephen K. Ford to the Oklahoma Municipal League Regional Council, declaring said appointment to be for the benefit of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, and other municipalities within the district, and declaring the mission of the Oklahoma Municipal League to be for the public purpose.
So basically, you know, now, uh, Mike, and you guys, if you're at the, uh, conference, you heard him talk about it, uh, creating these regional councils. Uh, we had an initial meeting over in Woodward two weeks ago, uh, there, and we'll just kind of talk about it a little more. Um, but they asked that we have a, a formal resolution to not make some of these regional councils, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to, can I do that? I'll make a motion to approve City of Alva Resolution twenty-four, twenty twenty-four dash zero one nine, a resolution, City of Alva, Oklahoma, of support of the appointment of Stephen K. Ford to the Oklahoma Municipal League Council, declaring said appointment to be for the benefit of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, and other municipalities within the district, and declaring the mission of the Oklahoma Municipal League to be for the public purpose.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call the vote please.
Bowman.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Okay, moving on to item nineteen, discussion action to approve the City of Alva Resolution twenty twenty-four, dash zero two one, a resolution, City of Alva, Oklahoma, authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan, REAP.
This is extended annual REAP grant, it's typically seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, we kind of missed out on last year, because we take some to finish Locust Street. Uh, but now we closed up that REAP grant from twenty-two, but can apply again for the REAP grant here in twenty-four. But they want us to stay with a resolution, they're trying to do that.
I move to approve City of Alva Resolution two zero two four dash zero two one, a resolution of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, authorizing application for financial assistance from the Rural Economic Action Plan, REAP.
Second. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Call the vote please.
Edir.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Hey, item twenty, nothing qualifies as new business. Item twenty-one, remarks and inquiries by councilmen.
Um, I do have something, uh, National Newspaper Week was October sixth through the twelfth, so I'd like to, um, thank and recognize Marion and the Auburn View Courier for everything they do for the city, for the community. Um, she does a great job of keeping all of our citizens informed, um, with the, showing up to not just city council meetings, but to all different types of, uh, city board meetings, and having the video for us, so our citizens can watch. So I'd like to extend my appreciation to you and the newspaper. Did we have any context, like, I know Mr. Ferris left already, but just the five hundred dollar bill, what was decided on that exactly, and Kelly decided? We, we, we don't have any ordinances about appealing a, a water bill or anything. I, I reached out to some other attorneys to see what other cities are doing. Uh, and basically, the one attorney that got back with me said, in the city he's at, they have a system that if somebody wants to come and appeal, they had given their business managers so much authority to reduce it by so much, uh, or otherwise, uh, it would go and run the council to decide that. Uh, and I think the other thing we did was we did a test of his water meter, uh, and it was accurate. And I think her, she was, it was accurate before that one month, it's been accurate since. So we don't have any evidence really to suggest that.
So we don't have any evidence really to suggest that it's not, it wasn't accurate enough. I think we get into an issue of if we
Do it for one person, why aren't we doing it for somebody else? I don't know if that's the one, one of them.
So do the other council think it'd be beneficial to have a, on an agenda, have a, put an appeal process in place?
I think we definitely think, I think it's going to happen again at some point. It's just the nature of things.
I'm not saying that the testing was wrong or right. I just, it just seems, I did that math and it's around twenty-four thousand gallons of water in three days. Your hose is up to around six gallons a minute for twenty-four hours a day.
That's not right.
I mean, that's a lot of, I mean, that's a lot of water just to vanish in the thin air. And so I don't, and he'd have to stood out there for twenty-four hours a day to haul it all off, which to get that done in three days, more than likely. So it just seems like something glitched in my opinion, just from that standpoint, but I don't know. It just seems odd.
Yeah, I agree.
But I, I would like to see on a future agenda or some item that we have a conversation about some type of appeal process for bills and stuff.
I think you like, ask the mayor maybe to committee your task force, something like that as a discussion.
So I think we have a, a water and wastewater committee. I wonder if it could go to that instead of the full, I mean, that would be a little bit oversight, but it might be something to look into.
And I think the discussion to start needs to center on the idea of whether or not we think it's appropriate to do appeals process.
I just think there should be some channel for citizens to go to the, I disagree.
And we can turn the chat to that other city because we can talk to, get a copy of their ordinances and see what that looks like.
Yeah.
Uh, maybe as a, an example to, to go from.
No other comments? With that, we'll adjourn the city council meeting and open up the Alba Economic Development. Call vote please.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lark.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Thoman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Edir.
Here.
Okay, item number three, discussion action on consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A U A meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority and trustee designed to discuss an item on the consent agenda. May request it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion the next item on the regular agenda. It will be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of minutes at special meetings September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Oh, and approval of claims in the amount of thirty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-four cents and payroll expenses of nineteen thousand two hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-five cents.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Hold second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call vote please.
Lark.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Thoman.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Okay, item number five, discussion action to approve Ascend Commercial Builders Change Order number five. For the Hatfield Park Aquatic Center's sanitary sewer system at a price increase of fifty-four thousand fifty dollars to the original contract.
Some background on this, and we don't know what happened. I don't know what happened. At some point when we were discussing the pool, uh, with Park Hill, not Park Hill, Kimberly Horn, the engineers. Somebody somewhere got in the head that the city was going to self-perform running the sewer for the pool and connecting tar manholes, uh, to connect to the city sewer system. I, nobody knows who said it. It's, 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 it's irrelevant who said it. Point is we don't have the time or the money to do it ourselves. Uh, or the manpower or the licensing to run that sewer. So it's, uh, that line's going to be about twelve feet deep, so it's very same. Uh, and it's just going to be a nightmare. So, uh, we ask Ascend to see what it costs at a time. We, we can't do it for that price. So, so we got to go rent everything, kind of, just bring it along and receive that. And this was approved by the Parks and Rec Board.
I move to approve the Ascend Commercial Builders Change Order number five for the Hatfield Park Aquatic Center's sanitary sewer system. At a price increase of fifty-four thousand and fifty dollars to the original contract.
Hold second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call vote please.
Edir.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Lark.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Thoman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Okay, nothing qualifies as new business. We'll adjourn the Alba Economic Development Authority meeting and open up our Alba District Authority meeting. Do we have a roll call please?
Hoffman.
Here.
Lark.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Thoman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Brooks.
Here.
Edir.
Here.
Okay, item number three, discussion action on the consent agenda. All the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at A U A meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority and trustee designed to discuss an item on the consent agenda. May request it be removed from the consent agenda in place for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of minutes to special meetings September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting September sixteenth, twenty twenty-four. Approval of claims in the amount of one hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And payroll expenses of fifty-one thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and twenty-eight cents.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call vote please.
Parsons.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Edir.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Thoman.
Yes.
You, Brooks.
Yes.
Okay, item number five, discussion action to approve declaring as surplus all City of Alba dumpsters, roll-on, roll-off bins and polycarts to facilitate the sale of those items at the appropriate time and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to conduct those transactions.
Basically starting ahead of game, we've got several dumpsters that we can get rid of now. They're not sourceable. We can sell it for scrap metal, a little money out of them. Then we can also start throwing out to the city, say, we're going to have these dumpsters here in December, January, uh, start seeing if anybody's interested in buying. So we're starting to head a game right now.
This is odd. Are there some roll-on, roll-offs that we just want to keep back?
There are, but so we just don't have to sell them. We just keep them. So, and if they get damaged or bad or something, we can probably, we can cut it.
So at what point are we going to go ahead and get rid of all the, I mean, we're going to wait to get rid of all the dumpsters now and
No, we're, we're not going to get rid of all of them right now. I'm sure that I'm going to get rid of the ones that are bad that we can't even use. And then whenever Waste Connection comes in and takes over, uh, we'll get rid of the rest of them.
Are you going to get rid of them right after they
No.
Are we going to hang on to them for a while?
We hang on to them as long as we want to. They're just not to be, start looking, selling this with buyers out there to buy the stuff.
What about all the polycarts?
They're, they're on here too.
Okay.
Well, uh, I have a number of towns that may be interested in the polycarts. This is actually kind of hard to find right now.
Well, I move that we approve declaring surplus all of the Alba dumpsters, roll-on, roll-off bins and polycarts to facilitate sale of those items at the appropriate time and authorize the city business manager and/or mayor to conduct those transactions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call vote.
Edir.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Brooks.
No.
Parsons.
Yes.
Thoman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Lark.
Yes.